I'm calling the May 2nd meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the municipality of Anchorage to order. And if we would go ahead and start out with a roll call, please.
Nancy Pease?
Here.
Jim Frederick?
Here.
Connie Yoshimura?
Here.
Art Isom?
Here.
Ruth Phelps?
Stacey Dean?
Here.
Terry Parks?
Dana Prus?
Here.
Rich Wilson?
Here.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have three sets of minutes to approve tonight. I'll accept a positive motion for approval. Okay, Ms. Pease moved, seconded by Mr. Frederick. Is there any minutes we need to pull for discussion? Is there any objection? And the minutes for March 7th, April 4th, and April 11th are approved. Ms. Yoshimura, would you please handle the disclosures this evening?
Yes, Ms. Pease. Do you have anything to disclose this evening? No. Mr. Fredericks?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Chair Isom?
Nothing.
Commissioner Prus?
No.
Commissioner Dean?
No.
Commissioner Phelps?
No.
And I have nothing to disclose this evening as well.
Okay. I'll let the record show that Commissioner Phelps is here. Okay, we have a number of postponements this evening, so, Ms. Yoshimura, if you'd handle that, and we'll handle each one separately in case there's any discussion.
In the case number 2010-076, I move for postponement until July 11th.
Please use your machine so we can record this. Ms. Yoshimura, would you? Very good. And it's been seconded. Wait a minute, we lost it there. Okay, wait a minute. Are you ready to go again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the case 2011-076, Mountain Air Drive, be postponed, date certain, until July 11th, 2011. Is there any objection? No objection, that is approved. Just a reminder, there were some additional items handed out tonight for the Mountain Air Drive, so tuck that into your packet and save that entire packet for July 11th. Yes.
I didn't receive anything except the postponement request.
There should, it should have been in the actual packet that you got this evening.
Oh.
There were some items in the packet itself. It wasn't laid on the table.
Oh, right.
But there were two items in the packet itself, yes.
Okay. Listen.
Ms. Yoshimura, we've got?
Yes, in the case of 2011-019, I move to postpone to June 6th, 2011, by request of the petitioner.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Yoshimura, seconded by Ms. Dean. Any discussion? Any objection? Okay, that is, case 2011-019 is postponed until June 6th, 2011.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of 2011-032, I move to postpone to June 6th, 2011, by request of the petitioner.
It's been moved by Ms. Yoshimura, seconded by Ms. Dean. Any discussion? Any objection? Okay, case 2011-032 is postponed until June 6th.
Mr. Chairman, in the case S11864, I move to postpone to June 6th, 2011, by request of the petitioner.
Okay, I believe that, in that case, 2011-032, or not? Okay, wait a minute, hold on, we've got a computer problem here.
We just hit 032, and repla- S11864.
Got you. Okay.
and not understanding what else is on there, is this enough time for us to, for that one day, to put these three on that one day?
If we were going to hear them all tonight, there's time on June 6th. It's just a scheduling problem that staff is going to have to deal with.
I know it was already on the June 6th docket, so.
It isn't, but this is enough in advance. So we've moved them from tonight all to June 6th, that's all. So they're just going to have to be careful what else they stack up on June 6th.
Well, so, yeah, so when they do something now, this, do we get a chance to look at the June 6th docket, or the next docket before they postpone?
Yes, we will, at the monthly meeting of the, when we meet with the director. We'll see what schedule for June 6th.
Okay, can we also get that via email for those of us that can't make it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to go on this one now? Can't get it to clear, okay. Okay, all right, Ms. Yoshimura, let's go ahead and make a motion on this last one.
Mr. Chairman, in the matter of S11864, I move to postpone to June 6th, 2011, by request of the petitioner.
Okay, is there a second? We're having to do this manually.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Is there any objection? Okay, that passes. That's S11864-1, has now been moved to June 6th. Okay, we got the thing cleared? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Take a positive motion. Ms. Pease?
I move for passage of the consent agenda resolutions for approval.
Okay, that's items D1, A, B, C, D, E, and item four. And, very good. Is there any cases who you wish to pull? And no cases needed to be pulled. Is there any objection to the approval?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify that on item D1E, I was not present for the hearing, and so I will be abstaining from that approval.
Right, well, D1E is the Mountain Air, and that's already been postponed. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong E. Okay, fine, so you will be abstaining from that one? Okay. Okay, there's none to be pulled. Is there any objections for the approval of the consent agenda? Okay, then that, those items are approved with the exception, except for D1E, which Ms. Yoshimura abstained from, but there's still obviously enough votes to pass it. Just make sure she's carried as abstaining. Thank you. Okay, let's see, item E, we've postponed, and so now we move on to the public hearings. Under the public hearings, items G1, 2, and 3 have been postponed, so we will now move to item G4. It's case number 2010-098, the petitioner is Catholic Social Services.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There is consent agenda item, time extensions, expedited hearings, minor conditional uses at 4A. Did you guys already handle the?
We already handled that.
I apologize for the interruption.
So, we're now at G4, Catholic Social Services, case 2010-098. Let's go ahead and hear from the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the benefit of the public, because this is a little bit of an unusual case, I'm going to explain a little bit of history and details on this case. In 2003, the commission approved an amendment to a final conditional use for a new replacement 240-bed adult homeless and transient shelter facility in the PLI district for Brother Francis Shelter. The approval was subject to nine conditions as stated in resolution 2003-010. Condition number eight stated, "Brother Francis Shelter shall provide a status report to the Planning and Zoning Commission within two years from the date of this conditional use approval on the following items: A) off-site impacts on the community; B) transit and crosswalk pedestrian concerns; and C) weekly patrols of nearby road and property trash patrols shall continue." Planning did not track this case so that it, you know, telling the commissioner, or the Brother Francis Shelter to return in two years. Catholic Social Services forgot about this condition of approval. They'd met all the other conditions of approval. Catholic Social Services eventually did appear before the commission in September of last year to try and satisfy condition number eight, this condition. The commission, quote, "moved that at some point in the future, the commission hold a public hearing on existing, on the existing conditional use of Brother Francis Shelter is operating under in case 2003-013." The intent in the minutes was that the commission wanted to verify that Catholic Social Services was working with the community to mitigate impacts and satisfy this condition. Catholic Social Services, since that meeting in September in front of the commission, has held several meetings with the planning division and with the Fairview Community Council regarding methods to resolve community concerns. Catholic Social Services has provided before us this evening a memorandum of understanding between them and Fairview Community Council which addresses condition number eight. The MOU states that the responsibilities, the responsibilities of both parties and establishes working relationship. The department finds that this MOU satisfies condition number eight and builds a platform for resolving and mitigating community concerns. That memorandum of understanding can be found on, I believe it's page four of the packet. Yeah, page three, three in the packet. And on page 21, there's a public comment, someone from the public who objected to the approval of this conditional use. The department recommends that the commission find that condition number eight is met. Catholic Social Services agrees to comply with all provisions of the current memorandum of understanding with the Fairview Community Council, acknowledging that changes may be made through the consent of both parties. Any revisions to the memorandum of understanding shall be submitted to the planning division so they may keep a record of this conditional use. That's all I have as a presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Okay, well, we'll move on to the public hearing. Before we start that, I'd like to read the rules on public hearings. Persons who wish to testify will follow the following time limits. A petitioner has 10 minutes, and part of that time may be used for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils and PTAs have five minutes, and individuals have three minutes. When your testimony has been completed, you may be asked questions by the commission, and you may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by members of the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action that the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. And finally, any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. So, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this particular case, and if we can hear from the petitioner.
Please state your name for the record. Mark Feinman. Good evening, Mr. President. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this topic. My name is Mark Feinman, and I'm a senior manager with Cook Inlet Housing Authority. And with me here is Susan Baumelasky, executive director of Catholic Social Services. Cook Inlet Housing Authority is here today because we managed construction of the Brother Francis Shelter in 2004, 2005, and since 2006, Cook Inlet Housing Authority has owned the Brother Francis Shelter. Catholic Social Services operates the shelter under an operating agreement with Cook Inlet Housing Authority. As MOA planning indicated, the 2003 conditional use permit included a condition, condition number eight, that required a status update we presented to the commission within two years of the conditional use permit being approved, so basically by 2005. And the staff's report was to include information related to the impact to the community by the Brother Francis Shelter. This status update was inadvertently not presented. I don't think there's any dispute about that. It should have been presented six years ago. That was a mistake on our part, and Catholic Social Services, Brother Francis Shelter, and we apologize for that. Catholic Social Services and Cook Inlet Housing Authority were notified last April that this condition hadn't been met. And as soon as we were notified, we made efforts to present our response to the MOA in terms of what the impact was. At the September 2010 Planning and Zoning meeting, the commission decided that a public hearing was necessary, and hence why we're here this evening to speak in support of the shelter, and also ask that the commission recognize MOA's planning recommendation that condition number eight be considered met and satisfied. And while we cannot go back in time and submit the status report, we do believe that the condition has been met, and you'll hear from Susan what's taken place over the past year that we think demonstrates the strides that have been taken to work with the Fairview Community Council in order to provide a mechanism to resolve disputes and issues directly between Brother Francis Shelter and the community council. Catholic Social Services, and specifically Susan spearheaded Brother Francis Shelter's outreach and response to this item, and I'm going to let Susan speak to the action taken with respect to working with the community council that I think you'll find will demonstrate our sincerity and commitment to successfully operating the Brother Francis Shelter within the Fairview community.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you for allowing me to speak. As Mark said, my name is Susan Baumelasky. I'm the executive director of Catholic Social Services. CSS has been responding to the needs of the community since its founding in 1966. During 1982, brothers Bob Eaton and Dave Supperman, servants of Christ, came to Anchorage at the invitation of then Archbishop Francis Hurley to gain an understanding of the plight of Anchorage's homeless. In early October 1982, two men and one woman froze to death on the streets of Anchorage. Members of the Anchorage community working with brothers Bob and Dave began searching for a suitable shelter. The first shelter was opened in an abandoned court system building on November 8th, 1982. Unfortunately, this building was torn down in May of 1983, and the homeless were then expelled from the land near the railroad tracks where they had set up camp. As a result, Archbishop Hurley suggested to brother Bob that they set up a tent city on the park strip to make a statement on the need for a shelter. The mayor of Anchorage at the time, Tony Knowles, located a structure, a warehouse for the storage of snow removal equipment, that was renovated and opened as Brother Francis Shelter, BFS, on October 3rd, 1983. Since that time, BFS has been providing shelter, meals, laundry, shower facilities, medical and legal clinics, housing referrals, employment referrals, and a clothing closet 365 nights a year. In 2003, as Mark stated, CSS undertook a campaign to rebuild BFS on the grounds of the original equipment warehouse and the new shelter opened in May 2005. Although many in the Anchorage community favored the rebuilding of the shelter, the feeling was not universal. As a result, the conditional use permit granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission to operate the shelter listed as one of its conditions that we provide a status report that Mark has already talked about. He also mentioned that a year ago, it was brought to our attention that we were not in compliance with this conditional use permit. We are in agreement that the requirement for a status report on community impact was inadvertently missed. A response was prepared and submitted to the municipality, and at the September meeting, as Mark stated, the commission indicated that they were not satisfied with the response from CSS on condition number eight, the community impact of the shelter, and requested a public hearing. Since that time, CSS has worked closely with the Fairview Community Council through many committee meetings and council meetings to develop a process for addressing and resolving community concerns. At the Fairview Council meeting on February 15th, 2011, the council approved the MOA with CSS, which established, among other things, a formal mutually agreed-upon process for collaborative problem solving. Unfortunately, homelessness in Anchorage has not gone away in the near 30-year existence of Brother Francis Shelter. People will always be attracted to Alaska for a variety of reasons and arrive here unprepared for the harsh winters. It is our duty as a compassionate community to provide shelter to those most in need in order to prevent deaths such as those that led to the development of BFS in 1982. CSS hopes that the Planning and Zoning Commission recognizes that our commitment to provide safe and warm shelter to the homeless is compatible with our sincere efforts to work with residents of the community in which BFS is located, and that the commission accepts or represents the recommendation of the MOA planning staff that condition number eight of the BFS conditional use permit has been met. I would like to reserve our remaining time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for either individuals? Okay, Ms. Yoshimura.
I would like to take this time to make a disclosure. I was, until this time, unaware that Cook Inlet Housing had a relationship with Catholic Social Services in an ownership capacity for the Brother Francis Shelter. I want to inform the commission that I am employed as an independent contractor and broker in a project that is owned by Cook Inlet Housing called Coronado Park in Eagle River.
Do you have any relationship with what is going on here at the Brother Francis Shelter?
I have no relationship to the case before us today.
Okay, if there were any, if we approve it, is there any monetary gain or anything like that that you would be involved in?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other members of the commission have any questions for Ms. Yoshimura? Okay, what I'd like to do on this particular one, based on this disclosure, is go ahead and dispose of it by a vote of the commission. So, Mr. Frederick, please state your motion.
I move to direct Ms. Yoshimura to participate in the case before us, 2011-098.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Wilson. Is there any further discussion from any members of the commission? Okay, so, before it's been moved by Mr. Frederick, seconded by Mr. Wilson, that we direct Ms. Yoshimura to participate in the case. Is there any objection? There is no objection, Ms. Yoshimura, you will participate. Thank you for the disclosure. That was a surprise.
It was a surprise to me also.
Okay, fine, okay, now, now, let's move back. Are there any specific questions for either petitioners? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Prus.
Since I'm new on this, I'm trying to get up to speed. There was a two-year annual reporting back to this body on your condition, or how you were implementing the previous action with the Brother Francis Shelter, is that correct?
In the 2003 conditional use.
Please speak into the mic, we need to get you recorded.
Sorry. In the 2003 conditional use permit, there was a condition that required Brother Francis Shelter to go back before the PNZ commission by, or within two years after the permit had been issued, so by 2005, go back before the commission and present a status report on the impacts of the shelter on the community, present information on some pedestrian concerns about the crosswalk adjacent to the facility, and in addition, talk about the community and trash patrols. So that's the status report that was supposed to have been presented by 2005. It was a one-time status report.
Okay, so, so that, obviously, that deadline was missed, and now you're bringing it up to give us the information on what has transpired there. And then I noticed in our packet, there were some comments from the community council about some deficiencies, and you mentioned, and you stated that you've looked at those deficiencies and come up with a plan to remedy that, if I followed you right. So my question is, if there was deficiencies over eight or nine years, and you've remedied it, who checks you now if we grant this request?
I'd like to address that, sir. In the MOA, between CSS and the Fairview Community Council, it specifies a process that, a mutually agreed-upon process, Fairview Community Council will hold an annual public meeting, or more often, if need be, where the community brings their concerns to CSS. And there's also a mechanism, if something happens in between that, like if people don't think we're picking up the trash well enough, or, you know, there's other dangers that are happening, or adverse impacts, that they can bring them up to myself as executive director. That process was never specified before, so we feel strongly that we have a mechanism in place to deal with it now. And I think what happened was, it was never that we didn't want to do that, there was a change in leadership at CSS, that was a couple of years before I moved to Alaska, and I took my position in '06, and as Mark said, we apologized for that falling through the cracks. And when we prepared the initial report that came to Planning and Zoning last September, the way we read it was, we were looking at what the impacts were, and I went to the Fairview Community Council and presented what we felt the impacts were, instead of doing it the other way. Instead of getting the impacts from the community and addressing those, we said what we felt those impacts were, and the reaction was not positive, but it did lead to a lot of dialogue between CSS and the community council that I think has really furthered our relationship and our ability, our service provision, and I think the Fairview Community Council wants to use that MOA as a model with other service providers within their community council districts, so.
So, so there's a mechanism now, that, so before, did you get any complaints that you did not act on, or?
I was not made aware of any complaints, and through, there was no, there was not a process in place, so, I mean, what normally happens with grievances is that they would come to me as So, I mean, what normally happens with grievances is that they would come to me as executive director and if I don't resolve them, they would come to our board. And that process didn't happen. A year ago, a little before all this started.
If I may interrupt you. You say that process didn't happen. So you got no complaints to bring to your board?
I did not get any complaints to bring to the board, no, sir.
Okay. And then one last question is, what, the relationship between Cook Inlet Housing and Catholic Social Services? If you are, are you a contractor for Cook Inlet Housing? And is that kind of how I read this? And if so, where does Cook Inlet Housing have any responsibility with what your actions are?
That's a, I think that's a fair question. Cook Inlet Housing Authority owns Brother Francis Shelter. And I guess I would say that this conditional use permit attaches to the property and so we may ultimately be responsible for the conditional use permit. We have an operating agreement with Catholic Social Services such that Catholic Social Services is responsible for operating the shelter.
So what mechanism do you have in place to verify what they plan on doing with the community councils and the local input for deficiencies? What does Cook Inlet, what is their position? What do they plan on doing as Catholic Social Services as your extension under contract?
We're going to continue to monitor the relationship between Catholic Social Services and the Fairview Community Council. And we in fact have a relationship, Cook Inlet Housing Authority has a relationship directly with the Fairview Community Council and have discussions with various board members and partnering. So we have an ongoing relationship with the community council too. And it's in our interest to make sure that Catholic Social Services abides by the conditions and their memorandum of agreement between or with Fairview Community Council as well. We also have the operating agreement and frankly, I don't know the specific provisions about requirements, but I'm sure there's a, some provision in there that requires to operate the building or the facility in accordance with the applicable law. And I think that probably this issue would fall under that.
So the ultimate responsible party would be Cook Inlet Housing. It's, the permit is in your name.
Well, I guess that's a legal determination. I don't know that I have the authority to make that legal determination, but in my opinion, I mean, I think the permit attaches to the property. So I would think that Cook Inlet Housing Authority is ultimately responsible.
Well, for me, it's, the decision-making process is pretty simple. Who has the ultimate authority and responsibility to enact the agreement to make sure this happens in the future, doesn't fall through the cracks? And so is it Catholic Social Services or is it Cook Inlet Housing ultimately? Who, who, who does the municipality go to?
Well, I think because Catholic Social Services is the operator of the facility and the issue here relates to the operation of the facility, Catholic Social Services needs to have the memorandum of agreement and the agreement with the Fairview Community Council. I think that's, that makes the most sense. Who does the municipality go to? I think they do what they did a year ago. And they sent the letter to who they thought the permit was, you know, attached to, and that was Catholic Social Services at the time. Susan contacted us, we jointly got together and worked together to try and resolve the issue. I think that's, that's the correct mechanism.
Okay, I'm not quite clear, but I understand what you're trying to say.
We also have, one of our board members is with Cook Inlet Housing Authority. So, I mean, there's a lot more transparency of information, like we said, I mean, this brought up, there were other issues on the conditional use permit that Cook Inlet Housing took care of around landscape plans and things like that as well. Because this involved the operation, we're the ones that entered into the MOA with the community council.
Catholic Social Services?
Yes, sir.
So, long-term contract, short-term contract with Cook Inlet?
We have an operating agreement for 35 years. And at that point, after that 35 years, the building then reverts to Catholic Social Services.
Do you have other questions for the petitioners? Okay, thank you. You've got three minutes and 26 seconds for rebuttal. Is there anybody else that would wish to testify?
My name is Ron Belava. I'm the adjacent property owner across the street in multiple parcels. I brought a visual aid there and if you look at that, I'm not going to talk about garbage. There's a life story in every bottle, but I only have three minutes. And what I think happened is Catholic Social Services, I knew Brother Bob and Brother Dave. My wife and I went to church there at the shelter every other week and was basically kind of like one of the founders with Jim Calderola, who was the executive director at that time. But I think what's happened here is that Catholic Social Services and social services in general have taken a turn and have forgotten about the overflow impacts on the community, including these three. And they should be held to a higher standard, kind of like a priest that you trust and shouldn't be molesting children and have $166 million settlement, breaking the silence. And for me to break the silence is economic and political suicide. To challenge a homeless shelter or challenge the cross does me no good. But what we have to do is follow the letter of the law. If there's pompous and pretentious behavior that holier-than-thou, people can look down at the neighbors and say, "Look, we're doing a humanitarian thing. Sorry about the garbage, sorry about the threats, et cetera." I think there would owe me to a higher standard. And this eight-year gap, I wouldn't buy that Kool-Aid whatsoever about the leader of Catholic Social Services coming and telling us what the impacts are. I gave you a big packet on carlike manner that included a legal letter threatening to sue them if they wouldn't start mitigating some of the threats to my family, actual threats from the overflow, along with garbage and other things that were listed in this letter. And as far as getting an answer, it was call the police. They have no responsibility for their clients outside their facility. They didn't document this letter. And even their own manual, their own manual of the Brother Francis Shelter doesn't carry a single line to be respectful to the neighborhood and how to behave outside the facility.
Can you summarize, sir?
What I'd like to summarize is, I looked at this entire packet and I would like you as commissioners to ask me any, on any page, any issue, and I can refute it factually and document it for you. And I think the key here is there's no punishment. There's nothing. If I was a truck rolling out a sand pit and dumped dirt and I didn't clean it up, they'd shut down the pit in a minute. If it was a coal mine blowing dust on the neighborhood, they'd shut it down. If it was a bad bar making noise that took away the quiet enjoyment of the neighborhood, they'd be punished. There's no punishment. I'd like to see a bond. I'd like to see some sort of extension of this public hearing that they go.
Thank you, sir.
To the neighbors.
Sir, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Do you have any questions?
Mr. Wilson.
Thanks for coming forward. On the, as I note in the packet, you read the packet, the Fairview Community Council's responsibilities under this agreement that was executed, item 4E, is forwarded to the municipality of Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission. Any concerns or complaints not addressed that came up from their periodic meetings? To what extent does that satisfy your concern?
None, none, because I've called these people. What do you think? I just write a legal letter, pull this out of the blue? I called them, asked to appear before the Board of Trustees. And you know what they told me? Go to the website, to the lower red left-hand corner of Catholic Social Services, write us a letter, we'll review it, and if we find it pertinent and it warrants an appearance, we'll let you appear. I mean, what is that? What is that? What kind of neighbor would do that?
I guess I'm asking you about the Fairview Community Council.
The Fairview Community Council, that's Kool-Aid. What's to hold them to that? What's to hold Cook Inlet? What's to hold Catholic Social Services to show up from a year and all and give a status report that they wrote themselves? It didn't document the community impact. They documented what they thought was the impact, that they had 381 homeless when they're only supposed to have 240. We need more money. Our problem is growing. So if it's growing, what do you think the impact is? And they didn't address the pedestrian crosswalks. There's no crosswalks from Reed Boulevard to Cadova Street. That's a yellow flashing light. Three people got killed down there. I mean, smut. What's the third one? The third one is weekly trash patrols. This is from my side of the fence and that's only the Monarch bottles. I cashed in aluminum cans, 0.3 tons, at 62 cents a pound, I got $360 to pay for the labor to pick them up. I bought the van for Arba to take around those people and pick up the trash from their clients. I did that because it was such an economic impact on my business to pay people to do it, to haul it away, because it takes 32 days to haul the trash away from the side of the road. 32 days. Gerald Hess, homeless coordinator, called him four times, 32 days. But only tonight, there's 68 bags of garbage. We just removed it three days ago. Would you want that outside your business, Connie? Outside of a broker's business? I have a business, a viable business. I live down there. This is a disgrace. And they have no punishment. There's no accountability, other than, we'll see you next year, give us a report. I want a bond. I want that bond back. I want a set of rules for that shelter that the community can approve. I can't believe these rules. So I want to see some restrictions. They got carte blanche to walk over our neighborhood and this woman didn't understand the conditional use for herself. And she walked on this aisle with a show pony homeward bond person with Melinda Freeman to get a second conditional use. Clean up your own backyard before you start endorsing another conditional use and steamrolling over Fairview. And it's ghettoizing our neighborhood. That's what it's doing. And in summary, that boiling pot that you keep adding into and turning up the heat, when that explodes, it's going to be through this whole community. So hold them accountable with some strong restrictions. That MOA and its memorandum of agreement, not understanding, it has to be stronger. It has to have ramifications. We want the bond back. We want basically another public hearing every, within three months, so you can hear from the community, not necessarily to the council, the community directly affected, that she should survey personally.
So any further questions?
Your belief is that the Fairview Community Council is not an adequate watchdog to represent the community?
There's no bite. Where's the bite? Where's the bite?
No, I'm just talking about presenting information.
Not whatsoever, because over time, those nonprofits will infiltrate a community council, no different than Bill Wymer, no different than Jeff Beals, when they got this, he was head of Brother Francis Shelter, right, but he got it. The point is, the point is, after they got the conditional use, they disappeared. The only reason she came back to those meetings was for carlike manner.
Mr. Belava?
Yes.
Let's see if we've got any more questions here for you. Ms. Pace.
Yes, Mr. Belava. I'm just trying to document the several impacts that we are supposed to consider under condition eight. And so this litter, you picked it up from your private property, is that correct?
That's correct.
Over a period of?
Over a period of about, not even three months. You could go to now and pick up some of those.
Okay, and then you said you had a van that you hired to pick up litter in?
No. Ed O'Neill drives the Arba van.
I don't know what that is.
The Arba van is like Char, the liquor industry. They basically needed a van. I purchased the van, a 12-passenger van, so he could get community service workers to go around and pick up the garbage. And the reason I did that is because it cost me between $2,700 and $3,500 a year to pick up this trash and have it disposed of. And that's visually, if you ride down Eagle Street, you'll count tonight, maybe, and if not, I'll donate $100 to the Brother Francis Shelter, over 50 bags of garbage.
Okay, and that was the other question I had. The bags of garbage are collected by community service, is that what you're saying? And then they're left by the side of the road?
Correct.
Okay, and then who's supposed to haul them away?
Well, allegedly Parks and Recs, but sometimes there's fecal material in there and they won't take it away. It's kind of sad. Long story there, but the short of it is, hey, it's a biological hazard.
Okay, and so you've observed these bags standing by the road. You said 32 days, is this a recurrent problem?
Recurrent?
No, I'm just asking because I don't know.
No, that's fine. I've been there for 30 years.
Okay.
I've been there for 30 years. That's why about the van, I couldn't keep hauling it away myself. And to continually call Gerald Hess, call Parks and Recs to have them remove it, I might as well do it myself.
Ms. Pace, we need to take a break right here. Mr. Belava, just hold that thought. I've had a request that we need to take a quick break, so we're going to take a five-minute thing.
All right.
And we'll bring you right back up. Calling the meeting back to order. Mr. Frederick.
Thank you, through the chair, Mr. Belava. Is it a fair statement that not all of the trash that's deposited on the streets or on private property is deposited there by clients of the Brother Francis Shelter?
Maybe in some other case, but these people are coming to Beans and the shelter. They have no other reason. I mean, there's no park or anything there.
I mean, there are people that camp around the old hospital site that?
Those are all, as I've watched them over the years, they're in and out of the shelter in Beans. I would honestly say that 99% of them are clients of Beans and the shelter. They're just not random people.
Okay.
And if I can mention one thing, since it came up, the third thing here is the transit and crosswalk pedestrians, and you asked about that, but CSS didn't.
I've not asked about that.
Well, no, you're walking there where the garbage comes from, but the pedestrian crosswalk issues aren't addressed. That's one of the conditional uses. And there's no reference to the safety issues. That the bus stop that is at the lower end has moved up in front of the shelter, it's still only a flashing light. They shouldn't even stop the bus there. And it's on a hill. They haven't addressed this crosswalk pedestrian issue whatsoever. And three people got killed. Where is that in their status report or address it here? There's still all the noncompliance.
Ms. Pace, you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to finish what I was getting at before. You mentioned that you want a memorandum of agreement and a public hearing, and I gather you want it in front of an adjudicatory board. Is that what you were getting at, the Fairview Community Council isn't an adjudicatory board?
Oh, yes, we'd like to come back before the commission because you're the only ones with power. Well, the community council has no power to enforce them to, what, mitigate the safety hazards? We have no power for that.
Okay. And then I have a question for staff that relates to something Mr. Belava asked. Mr. Belava asked about a bond to ensure that Catholics. Mr. Leva asked about a bond to ensure that Catholic Social Services performs, but are there any standards to which they're supposed to perform, by which, you know, to which a bond could apply? Is there anything regarding the regularity of their trash pickup or, well, obviously it's difficult to figure out how to address the crosswalk issue, but if there were a bond, what would be assessed? What would be evaluated, is my question?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, I don't know how to answer that. The planning department has, in some rare cases, held a bond when a subdivision agreement for, say, installation of landscaping, a subdivision agreement can be expensive, and so it was better handled through, basically, the planning office, like my counter, you know, locking up and holding a check for a year, something like that. But we don't have a really good process, a subdivision agreement or process or improvement of public places. There has to be some, something that puts somebody on the hook for something. In the case of conditional use permits, it's usually the threat of losing your conditional use permit causes you to simply, you know, comply with the standards of approval for a conditional use or follow through on what you said you would do. For instance, a natural resource extraction project, say, an Eagle River, you know, gravel extraction project, if they work outside of the hours of the approved hours, then, and somebody calls and complains, because we're complaint-driven, then, you know, what would happen is a code enforcement officer would go and tell that operation, you know, "You can't work outside of these hours." And they usually would, you know, apologize, and that would fix things, but if they were a repeat offender, then, you know, that case could come back before the commission. A conditional use permit can be revoked, new conditions can be added. A conditional use permit is sort of flexible and to, you know, meet the needs of, you know, comply with the commission's conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Leva? Thank you, sir. Anybody else that wishes to testify? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Annete Leva. Frankly, I'm weary of this conversation. We've had these civil discourses with Catholic Social Services, Cook Inlet, Royal Cap, Department of Planning and Zoning. To call into question the mode of the delivery of social services to the poorest of the poor, the most wretched among us in this forgotten part of the city, is met with accusation of self-interest, intolerance, nimbyism, and inhumanity. Such accusations might have merit if I didn't know this man who just testified before you, who, among others, has consistently questioned these modes and their impact. You might laugh at the word prophetic applied to one whose almost unreasoned passion and volatility is often dismissed, sometimes even feared. No one is more qualified to speak to the issues of Catholic Social Services and Brother Francis Shelter's violation of its conditional use and its impact on their neighborhood than its nearest neighbor. No one is more negatively impacted than Grub Steak Auction and the Leva family, my family. I am dismayed how year after year, project after project, erodes attempts by Fairview to improve its community, to balance the necessary compassion and grit of determination to effectively deal with this problem that won't go away when it is continually pushed to both the edges of our consciousness and our city. We are here, I am here, to prick your conscience. And whether I do so or not, you will console yourselves with a blind affinity to preferential option and a misconstrued sense of justice. Ironically, you will miss the prophetic voice in a rhetoric of regulation. You will craft memorandums of understanding and agreement, you will stretch legal limitations put on, placed by government agencies, you will fine conditional uses to thwart the will of communities, the rights of individuals, the justice due the poor, and you will call it righteousness. You will even say, "My family shouldn't live there. We shouldn't have raised our children next to our business that we built from the ground up because, well, it's an industrial area. You wouldn't live here." But ironically, you condemn the ones your faith demands you must not ignore to the fringes. You marginalize them in the most graphic and unforgivable way. You make them invisible. When they die, that cloak of invisibility is lifted for a moment, but you would rewrap it by giving away a blanket, a tent, a meal, a hot coffee in styrofoam cup. And when the detritus of your compassion lodges against the fence of our property, is strung from the trees a few hundred feet from my bedroom window, is stepped in by my family dogs who sometimes stray but who are necessary for our security, you will say you are not responsible. And you're right, you are irresponsible. You uphold and profess the dignity of one class of people, the homeless and the inebriate, and you trample the rights of another, the homeowner, the businessperson, and most profoundly the entire community of Fairview, even the city of Anchorage. When Grub Steak Auction Company and the Leva family move away or we die, yes, we will certainly probably anticipate this with a sigh of relief, but who will notice?
Please sum up.
I will. Who will notice the fall of one overcome by alcohol, by cold, making his way to the ten cities you help create but cannot creatively dismantle? Who will see the smoke of illegal campfires? Who will hear the cry of the women in the woods who are raped or the incoherent mentally ill person who is screaming in anger, in terror, in belligerence, in fear, not Catholic Social Services? You don't listen, you don't even take the time to walk to the edge of the shelter's property to truly extend the hospitality you so revere. This is about way more than a failure to pick up litter. You make me ashamed to call myself a Catholic.
Ma'am, we may have some questions for you.
Sorry, I'm impassioned too.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Leva? Politely none, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to testify?
Hello, my name is...
Excuse me, just a minute, Mr. McLaughlin? Just a second. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, through the chair to Ms. Pease. Ms. Pease asked a question, is it possible to require a bond with the conditional use? And I should have answered that, yes, there is. I looked at Anchorage Municipal Code Title 2115030F4B2. So under this subsection, it says, "The authority, hearing, and application for final approval may impose conditions upon the final approval that if, that it finds necessary." And it lists a few things, and one of the things it says is the posting of a performance guarantee for the provision of public and private improvements. It seems to me that some sort of bond can be required with a conditional use based on that language, and I can repeat the code citation if you'd like.
Please.
Anchorage Municipal Code 2115030, under Section F, it says, "Final Approval," and there's one, two, three, four, you go to four, it says, "The authority, hearing, and application for final approval," that's the commission. A is conformed to the conditional use site plan and standards of approval. B is enforced development in accordance with the final approval, including but not limited to, and then it's this recording of easements, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, that's one, and then two is the one, it says, "The posting of a performance guarantee." That, to me, means a bond.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, please state your name for the record.
My name is Maureen Hagblom, and I'm here today as a representative of the Anchorage Coalition on Homelessness. Based on the information that I've received, it does appear that Condition Number Eight has been met, and the documentation I reviewed reflects Catholic Social Services diligent efforts to meet the terms of the conditional use permit. Catholic Social Services also has agreed to the provisions of the memorandum of agreement with the Fairview Community Council, and what I read in that memorandum of agreement appears to me to be a process that resolves issues which would include the voices of all the neighbors to Brother Francis Shelter. I respectfully request the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the recommendations of the municipality's planning staff, but all conditions for the Brother Francis Shelter conditional use permits have been met. And in the little bit of time I have left, I would just like to share a few thoughts. I'd really like to emphasize that the Brother Francis Shelter offers a crucial service to the community and the clients they serve. I believe we all know that. And without the services of the Brother Francis Shelter, our community will be far worse off. And Catholic Social Services is absolutely a collaborative partner to the community of Anchorage. They don't just provide a service, they strive to have a quality relationship with the community in general, and they're willing to do what it takes to continue that relationship with the community. The Brother Francis Shelter program measures their results, this is very important, just to see if after all of their hard work and everything they do every day, is anyone better off as a result? Yes, it is about those basic needs that you've all heard today about shelter and food and laundry services and coffee, but it's also about how many of their customers become permanently housed and whether those customers remain permanently housed. Yes, Brother Francis Shelter and their staff checks on their former customers six months after they have left the shelter, to see how they're doing. And not only that, the program cares about whether their customers attain employment or are able to increase their income, and that goes beyond providing the bed and the shelter. They're really a learning organization that's truly working to help Anchorage decrease the community's rate of homelessness and change a community condition. And yes, absolutely, meeting the requirements of permits, planning, and zoning is absolutely mandatory. It's also an added bonus to know that Anchorage is working with a true partner, and the partners at the table working to try to resolve all the concerns of the entire community and doing what it takes to make sure their clients are better off in the long run for their clients and the municipality of Anchorage. Thank you.
Ma'am, could you spell your last name? We missed it the first time through.
It's H-A-G-G-B-L-O-M.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Ms. Yosha Murray?
Yes, thank you for your testimony. I'm curious, frequently, I think I and other people, when we think about the Brother Francis Shelter and Beans Cafe, think of inebriates, but can you give me some demographic information about the clientele that you serve?
Sure, and, you know, quite frankly, I think Susan can probably give the demographic information a little bit better than I can, but generally, overall, in Anchorage, what we've seen with our homeless counts is that the rate of homelessness that is increasing in this community is family homelessness. Families are not housed at Brother Francis Shelter. They may come to Beans Cafe to partake in a meal, but we have families, shelters that are located here in Anchorage, both Clare House and McKinnon Shelter, and Brother Francis Shelter houses individuals. So where homelessness is increasing in Anchorage, to the tune of several hundred a year, is in family households. I don't know if that answers your question.
Any further questions for Ms. Hagblom? Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wish to testify? Sir, please state your name for the record.
I'm Jim Crockett, Executive Director of Beans Cafe. I've been there for about 10 years. Came with my family in 1955 to Anchorage, Alaska. It was a town of about 2,000 people, really thriving, and then I went to work for a company called Harco. It was a dream for a lot of Alaskans that had an opportunity, raised my way up, and finally I decided I needed to pay back to the community. So I went and got on the board of Beans Cafe in 1982. Beans Cafe is run like a business. I challenge anybody to look at the municipality records for kitchens. We've got 100% ready the last three years. We require 92 people to open the cafe. Most of them are clients. We believe if you can't pay for a meal, you can contribute your efforts. If we don't get 92 people, we don't open up. I challenge people to look at our, look at the parking lot. I mean, I've got a guy that's a 20-year vet for the Army. That is impeccable. I mean, it's one of the first cleaned-up parking lots in all, we have a trash cleanup that starts at 7:30 in the morning. That's one of our 92 positions. So, you know, we look at it this way, that we know, I could be an inebriate. Something could happen to me catastrophically, and I'd sure want somebody to pull me up by the boots and give me the opportunity to be, you know, given just the basics, and that's all we're doing. We're giving people the basics, but if we give people hope, if we give them something to look at, in fact, I was talking to a guy two days ago, volunteer, he was in a wheelchair, picked up 91 cups of coffee that were at Beans Cafe. The prior day, he'd picked up 52. He's a man who's really making a lot of improvement. I said, "Yeah, you are." If we give them hope, then we give them dreams. And I know that I live my dream every day because I go to work. With that in mind, and we work very closely with Catholic Social Services, we hope to establish a campus that we can really put people to work. You know, there's other things happening, like the downtown soup kitchen. Who's going to do breakfasts? Who's going to do dinners? Who's going to do lunches? A lot of thought, a lot of, you know, economics out there, and I think we need to look at those issues, and we need to look at the issues that really are meaningful to Anchorage and make Anchorage a beautiful place like everybody else wants it to be. Thank you.
Okay, sir, let's see, we've got a couple of questions here. Mr. Frederick?
Thank you, through the chair, Mr. Crockett. How do you, you know, I understand your view, and it probably is accurate, that your immediate surroundings in front of your front door and in the parking lot are probably spick and span, but how do you think about the impacts of the people that, you don't really know who's going to show up every day at your facility? I mean, you know a lot of them, I'm sure, because they come all the time, but you don't know who's coming, you don't know where they're coming from, you don't know what they do before they get to your facility, to your property, and what they do after they leave. But you are a magnet for people who can't otherwise provide sustenance for themselves, and those folks have an impact on the surrounding community. How do you think about that and about your responsibility for that impact?
I think I've got a deep responsibility, and let me tell you what I've done. I recently took a $70,000, what I'll call, risk. Currently, we serve seven days a week, hot breakfast. We only used to do three because the food bank didn't have any food. The other four was continental. We thought maybe what we could do is bring people off the streets and down to use our services if we served a hot breakfast. Sure enough, we've done it. 132 increased every day in the last four weeks, and we're going to do that. We're going to do that for a year. So, yeah, we're going to standardize things. We're going to make sure that we see and provide opportunities for people to come to us so we can provide the opportunities that both Brother Francis and Beans Cafe can provide to them. Did that answer the question?
No, I don't think so. You know, I understand that, and I applaud that part of your mission, but I think, and I would never presume to speak for Mr. Leva or anyone else, but, you know, they see more people coming to your facility because of that activity that then, when they are on their way there or after they have left there, litter the surrounding community and create other traffic hazards and such, and in that respect, it's not a particular benefit to the community. So it seems to me that there, even though you have no legal responsibility for off-site activity, that you have some kind of moral or social responsibility for...
Well, actually, you know, if you look at it, and this is something that's been very perplexing to me, and that I've been trying to get out to the public, and I don't know if I've done it as effectively or efficiently as I should, but the whole complexion of what I'll call the people that are served by Beans Cafe has changed. 80% are economically disadvantaged. They're not your street bum. They're not your street bum. They're people that are the working poor. I challenge people to come down to Beans Cafe and look in the parking lot. There is more duct tape on cars than I've ever seen in my whole life. There is a lot of people that go to their refrigerators towards the third and fourth and fifth of the month now, and there ain't anything there. We're servicing people that are economically challenged. We're seeing people that are not the street bum. That's why I think we've got an upward opportunity here. You know, you see the people that are holding the cards, and, you know, we, I worked with a group that went and, I don't like those guys. And we worked with a fourth-grade class that, if you look out on the buses, you'll see contributed charities, not to people. So the complexion of the... So the complexion of the population has changed dramatically, and economically, people are hurting. I saw a guy come pulling in a, in a Winnebago four days ago from Michigan, a man with nine kids. He says, "Hey, where's the permanent fund?" We're seeing a lot of people come up over the highway. So, you know, it's, and we're seeing the rural-to-urban migration too. Where you pay $9 for a gallon of milk, we're seeing that also. So there is a lot of changing mix of people. We can't make the situation that the street bum is the majority of the people that Beans Cafe see. If you think that, come down and enjoy my house. Come down to Beans Cafe and I'll buy you a meal. I'm proud of it, and you'll see the complexity of the people there.
Could I ask one more?
Yeah, go ahead.
Little different, little different subject. What's your opinion of the hazards of the street crossing and the bus stop?
The what?
The street crossing and bus stop immediately outside at the flashing light?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
What's your opinion of the hazard involved in the street crossing and the bus stop at the yellow flashing light immediately outside your respective facilities?
I've, there is a hazard there. I've called many times on that situation.
Called the Traffic Department?
What's that?
Called the Traffic Department?
Yes.
And what is your response to that?
I didn't get any response really from the Traffic Department. I've logged complaints. You know, there is a problem there. I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Flores?
I will tell you that I drive by Brother Francis Shelter and the Beans Cafe at least four times a day to my business, which is about a half mile away. I will also tell you that on a monthly occasion, I will find your customers sleeping on my doorstep at my business in the dumpster across the street. A little bit of trash, not a lot, because we're quite a bit away, I mean, we're still a half mile or three-quarters mile away. And I also tell you that I've noticed with your breakfast that there seems to be a sea of people now every day headed towards your facility to eat. And I have a couple of concerns with that. One is that because a lot of the streets where I'm at in the Viking Reed Boulevard area don't have streetlights, and the fact that it's an industrial area, and the fact that most of these folks are in dark clothing and everybody with big trucks, it's very hard to see them. I myself have made the occasions come close calls and not going very fast just because they tend to sometimes wander out into the street and you're not expecting that. So my couple of questions I have is, is your borders for trash cleanup your property line?
Is what now?
Is the borders for your trash cleanup your property line?
Yes.
Do you follow, do you understand the democra, or where your customers come from as far as the local locales within a mile of your facility?
I don't know. You know, it's tough to say because we see between 2,500 and 4,000 people a year, and that's on a seasonal adjusted basis. Some of them could be right down the hill where the Copper River people are processing fish. So, and that area down in the Viking area and stuff like that, that's not really changed all that much, so I'd have a rough time saying that I knew where people are coming from from a geographical area, because I couldn't walk as many miles as they do.
Well, I will say they seem to walk a long way. Sometimes it takes them a little while, but, and sometimes they come in groups and packs.
Right.
I was just curious if you, if you know the percentage that comes from the west, from the east, from the north, to the south, and I say, ask that because then it would be beneficial to talk to municipality in order to put more emphasis on certain pedestrian pathways if you in fact know where the customers are coming from.
Well, I, you know, I think there's another problem called public transportation. I know that we don't get many bus tokens anymore. One of our areas is we have a day labor pool. People can, if you want your labor leave's rate, you can call me. You know, the people are ready, they're ready to go, but I can't, bus tokens or anything else, I can't get them where you got to go. You got to come pick them up. I had 263 referrals last month just for that. So, you know, walking pathways, transportation as far as buses, that's, I think that's a whole solid different issue that, you know, I know I personally want to address.
Do you think it would be beneficial to work with Brother Francis Shelter to expand your cleanup area from your personal property to maybe a block, within a city block of the facility?
You know, we have, they've already talked to me about it. They're a little more proactive than I am because, to be honest with you, they've got a little more money than I do as far as looking at taking risks, and they wanted to set up an intrapreneur-type thing that they would go out and clean buildings. They wanted me to put a little money into it. Unfortunately, I didn't have the money to put into it, but next year I want to do that.
Well, would the concept of your customers volunteering one or two hours a week of cleanup duty be a prerequisite to getting served meals?
Yeah, we could do that. There's other innovative processes that I know I personally would like to look at and others have looked at. The city of Minneapolis, their mailroom department is run by homeless. My people, as I claim it, my beanies, I affectionately call them, cannot work eight hours a day, 40 hours a week, but they might be able to work three hours a day, 12 hours a week. And if you put a combination of those people together, then you've got a contract pool that maybe could really make...
Well, I will agree with you that the flashing light in front of the facility is a danger. I'm absolutely amazed that it hasn't been rectified with the municipality because I've seen many near misses. Fortunately, I haven't seen an actual hit, but I've seen many near misses with the folks utilizing the facility, and it's just a matter of time for more. I mean, again, with more people walking in the dark in the mornings, especially in the wintertime and icy and being on a hill, I just can't see it not happening, so I'll disclose that.
Ms. Pease?
One of my questions was answered, which is how far out does your trash pickup range? I think I have questions for staff, but no more for you, and thank you for your good work.
Okay, thank you.
Any further, wait, just a minute, sir. Let's see, any further questions? Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to testify? Yes, sir, please state your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, thank you for your service to our community. My name is Tom Crown. I've been a resident homeowner and taxpayer in Anchorage for 25 years. I donated my personal time and money at the Brother Francis Shelter the past 17 because it's a great program. The shelter serves the least of those among us with dignity and respect. We work to help the homeless get back on their feet, to get a job, to get a place of their own to live in. I've served as a Chair of the Shelter Advisory Council for the past 12 years, and as you can tell, I'm a strong supporter of the program there. We've been focusing for years to provide for the least of those among us and to help to work toward ending homelessness in Anchorage. We've been working to be a good neighbor. We've implemented new programs, as has been discussed, to clean up the neighborhood, and we have the records we'd like to show you. It sounds like we don't have them here. I've seen a notebook that's this thick with records from all the trash pickups, and we range out six to seven blocks from the Brother Francis Shelter picking up trash. We're not just picking up trash in the parking lot. But again, we've got those records, and we'd invite you to come down to the shelter and see those records to see our facility. Mr. Aliva moved into the neighborhood after the shelter was in operation and has proceeded to buy up lots around the shelter and Beans Cafe. Even though he's the newcomer to the neighborhood, he has been the complainer while the shelter has continued to work to try to be the very best neighbor we can in spite of this. You can liken this to the person that buys a house near the airport and then complains about airport noise. Some of this has gotten rather silly, and you may wonder if it's worth your time. Last year, Mr. Aliva complained to the municipality that one of the trees in front of the shelter was dead. In fact, a few of the branches on that tree had winter killed. If it had been a tree in my yard, or probably in your yard, you would have cut off the dead branches and let them grow back, because we wanted to really go the extra mile. We got rid of the tree and got a new one. So again, just another example. You know, please don't empty the shelter and turn those out onto the streets that don't have anything. Let us continue to work with them to help them find a job, to help them find a place to stay, to help them to become good citizens. Thank you for your continuing support.
Thank you, Mr. Crown. And Ms. Pease, you have a question?
Yes, can you speak about the problem that Mr. Aliva described about trash that's been bagged but then left along the roadsides for very long periods of time, and why would Parks and Rec be picking that up?
Yeah, again, I...
I don't know if you know about this or not, but...
With cleanup going on, and I've participated in a lot of cleanups around Anchorage with Boy Scouts and other groups, I know we've got trash around Anchorage, you know, this week during the cleanup week. I can't speak to the long-term issues, but again, I think our shelter director is here, and again, we'd be happy to show you our records. When this requirement was put in place, we've kept records and we can show you these records. We've picked up tons and tons of trash. It's an ongoing issue. We deal with it every spring around Anchorage, and we deal with it on a weekly basis there at the shelter, ranging six to seven blocks out.
Okay.
So I hope that helps, but I can't answer your question as well as I wish I could.
Yeah, well, if the director's here, maybe, well, I'll ask him or her.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Hi, Tom. I wonder how, I appreciate your report on what you have done to reach out beyond the boundaries of the property itself and recognize that the community impacts are there and doing something about it, but it would be good to get a summary of that for us because we haven't seen any of those records, and maybe if you can summarize them for us, it would help, or someone can summarize it, and to get a feel for how often those outreach programs occur and whether that's adequate.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wilson, again, you know, we're talking about one of the aspects that's a requirement of the conditional use permit, you know, the weekly trash pickups. You know, we've been complying with that, and here's Dwayne.
Wait, he can testify later, sir, so just go ahead and answer the question.
Yeah, for my part, again, I've seen the notebook. We've asked him, you know, for confirmation on that. He showed us the notebook. I paged through it a little bit, but, you know, that's been my involvement, just looking at it when we've been down there for advisory committee meetings.
Is it your sense that in being active in assisting with the mission of the shelter, that the impacts on the community either in the form of trash or additional pedestrian traffic, or the response of the municipality to safety concerns about pedestrians crossings and so forth, do you think all of that is adequate at this point, or where do you think we ought to go from here?
Boy, that's a hard question. I guess I think, you know, all of these things are things that we need to continue to strive to do better on. Again, I've been involved with the program there at the shelter, donating my time and money since 1993. I think we're doing a lot better now than we were then. You know, we've reduced the amount of trash in the area. We've got this active program going on, and as you know, part of that was pushed by the conditional use permit. The general site, the landscape, landscaping around the facility is much better than it was when we were operating out of an old abandoned warehouse. I can't speak so much about the traffic issues. Again, I go down there for a meeting once a month and go down and help serve meals and help with various projects, so again, I'm not there all the time like a lot of people are, so I can't speak to that. I think we're doing a lot better with, you know, involving the homeless people, as Mr. Crockett mentioned, similar to Beans. You know, we've, since I've been on the board, we've started a hire-from-within policy. You know, we used to just announce jobs and then hire, a lot of times from outside the facility. A lot of these people have a really tough time getting their first job. They've had, you know, some of the stories will just rip your heart out, what they've gone through, and we're trying to help them get back on their feet. And for us to give them a job, working in the facility, doing various tasks around the facility, a lot of times that can be the first step towards getting a job outside the facility, getting back, getting their life together, getting their own job, getting their own place. So again, we've been making progress, and again, all I can speak to are some of the things I'm aware of. Thank you.
I think we can ask others for that. Thank you. Ms. Yosha Murray?
Well, I was interested in your analogy about the person who buys a house and then complains about the airport noise. So when was the Brother Francis Shelter started?
Susan talked about that briefly, and I think there are others here. We have two of our board members here that were board members for the shelter when it started. They've been with the program from the very beginning, but I think 1983 was the year for this location. But again, you know, two of our board members believe in us so strongly, they have been donating their time and money since the very start. I'm the newcomer. I've been involved since '93.
So then you mentioned when Mr. Aliva bought his first property down there, and so was the shelter already in existence at that time?
That is my understanding. Basically, we were there, and again, you know, he came into the neighborhood and I think now owns a lot of lots around there. And that doesn't mean we can't, we shouldn't be a good neighbor. We're trying, but, you know, I guess personally, it feels like it's personal financial motivation by one individual, and no matter what we do, you know, you're going to hear complaints, we're going to hear complaints, and we're going to keep trying. We're going to keep trying our best.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Crown?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to testify?
Hi, good evening. I'm Dwayne Harris. I'm the program director, and I'm actually here to answer questions. I didn't come prepared to speak. But there was, I did hear an earlier question regarding how many times or what the area is. So there's two things I'd like to help the community understand. We at Brother Francis are a nighttime program, so we don't start our chores until about 4 o'clock in the afternoon, so you would not see us or our volunteers until later in the afternoon. As far as the trash and litter patrol goes, we have a goal of seven days a week having seven volunteers spread out in the nearby neighborhood to pick up trash. The exception is on extremely bad weather. We don't ask folks to go out and volunteer. And we don't leave our bags of trash by the side of the road because we do see that Parks and Rec is a little slow to pick up on the yellow bags, so our volunteers bring the bags back, they show us, and we log how many bags of trash have been picked up, and again, with a goal of seven nights a week.
Any questions for Mr. Harris? Yeah, Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mr. Harris. So when those trash bags come back to the facility, what happens to them then?
They go into the dumpster, and we pay to have them removed.
Okay, okay. On a daily basis and...
Correct.
Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yes, same question Mr. Frederick asked. Do you have any information, have you attempted to assess where your clients walk in the area when they're not at your facility, both for purposes of pedestrian safety and then for human sanitation issues? I mean, this is something that's off-site, so it's, I'm not asking whether you have the means to handle it, but it seems as if knowing where the impacts are occurring is a start. Have you, any information on that?
Based on feedback from the neighbors and during my time attending the community council meetings, and also, I work in Fairview. I make it a point to drive around and change my route every few days, because when I see a bad litter spot, I come back and I ask, "Let's send volunteers up to Hyder. Let's go hit Juno Street." That way, I'm also an active member of the community, and the things I see and hear, I can bring back and share with the volunteers, so we are... I can bring back and share with the volunteers, so we are responding in a more effective manner.
Okay, so you do reconnaissance on your own, just sort of informally?
That would be a good way to put it, yes, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
So, thank you for coming up to answer questions. I'm interested in your view, you get around the neighborhood a lot, and you've been doing this for a number of years, and it's so, it's very helpful to know what your impression is, whether the current method is working? Is it handling what you deem to be the impacts that are caused by your clients?
I guess I would have to answer that, that we in Anchorage have a litter problem, whether it be Fairview or Southwest Anchorage, where I currently live, is, it's an everyday battle. It's an everyday battle. And we don't ask the question, is that homeless trash or someone from housing?
Yeah.
We see litter, we pick it up, we get it in the dumpster.
Do you feel that you're kind of doing your share?
Yes, we would love others to join us to help it, make it a nicer, cleaner city.
Yeah, it's really hard to, for us to kind of figure out, okay, if there were an attempt to monitor the performance, what would this group try to use as criteria? And that, I'm trying to get to, I guess all of us are really trying to get to, is there a way for the offices of the municipality through us to get objective information that would be useful, so that we can measure progress from where we are today to where we will be in the future? Obviously, your clientele is growing because apparently, because of the economic situation, perhaps, and other reasons. So we need to track it as a community. And I'm trying to figure out, is, how this group might attack that? What criteria? Specific measuring devices would you recommend if we were to do this? So that we don't create this out of whole cloth?
Well, internally, how I measure it, again, starting with the goal of seven days a week, if we're dropping to three days a week, I'm asking staff why. And I am going to look at the weather. I'm also going to look at the physical health of our clientele. When we have a large number of seniors and disabled, I understand that we weren't able to get seven volunteers today. We were only able to get three volunteers. So to me, the way I measure it is the number of volunteers and the number of days.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Mr. Bruce?
Thank you. You mentioned that you go out with volunteers approximately up to seven, and kind of do a canvas of the local area, the neighborhoods for cleanup. Do you have a map that shows the area that you actually go and, that they're responsible to clean up?
We do, yes.
Is that given to the community council, so they know?
I've submitted to several different bodies over the years, and most recently, I believe it's actually in the packet.
Did we get a copy of that? See?
I think it's in our packet.
So, so it looks like-
I'm sorry, page 43.
Well, I guess my first comment was, when I saw it, I didn't realize it was that small an area, that you were, that you're, looked pretty small to me. So that being said, what do you believe in the concept of, you say you have volunteers versus requirements to go out and do cleanup with your folks that are staying at your facility?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Well, you use, you ask, you use volunteers to do cleanup?
Correct.
Okay, so is there any requirements that the folks that stay, do you have any requirements at all if someone shows up there that they have to actually do anything?
Yes, yes, and I guess volunteer may be a misnomer. Everyone has to sign up for a chore. We call it volunteering, but everybody has to sign up for a chore, whether it be sweeping, mopping. And we always start with the least desirable chores, because they're obviously the most difficult positions to fill.
And based on the seven folks, would it take more, say then, to extrapolate for a bigger area? Would it take you to more-
It would. More volunteers and more supervision.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Harris? Okay, I got a couple for you there, sir. Number one, you say you go out and you cruise the area, determine where the most trash is, and you say, "Guys, we've got to go out and do this area."
Swing to hotspots, yes.
Yeah, hit the hotspots. Do you go back and check the hotspots later on that day to make sure they're clean?
And there will be times when we have a hotspot that stays on our list for several days, because it was, Juno Street's one of the ones that is on my, you know, on my radar right now, because as the snow has melted, there's just a tremendous amount of litter there. And it will stay on our hotspot list until we're satisfied that we've done what we can do.
Okay, and is there any magic reason why you say you only have a maximum of seven people picking trash on any given day? I mean, is there, you have 200 and something people that spend the night there every night, I would assume?
Right, and it comes back to my earlier answer about supervision. We actually have about 45 volunteer positions any given night, with two to three staff to supervise. So it then becomes, how do we operate the facility, and then get the internal chores done while making sure we're doing our due diligence with the external chores, whether it be landscaping, litter patrol, watering the grass? It begins to grow exponentially, so it's limited resources that keep us sort of at that seven-person volunteer. And I will say, the litter patrol has the largest number of volunteer positions of all of our chores. Monitors any given night, we have four. People sweeping and mopping, two. So we have put the largest number of volunteers that we can effectively manage on the litter patrol, because we take it very serious.
And you don't send the people out on their own? In other words, there has to be a supervisor with the seven people?
They're not actually out there walking the routes with them, but they are responsible for checking when the person brings their bag of litter back.
Okay, so you send the people out on their own, but then you have somebody there that tallies the number of bags that go into the dumpster?
And verifying that they're not just hanging out and then coming back a half hour, hour later. We're actually seeing the fruits of their labor.
Okay. Okay, I have no further questions. Any further questions for Mr. Harris? Thank you for your testimony, sir.
You're welcome.
Actually, I do.
Oh, okay, Mr. Harris, there is another question. Ms. Pease?
Yes, it sounds as if the litter patrol is, you know, well-intentioned. Is there any way that you've thought of measuring not just effort, but results?
Well, again, the only measure that I've been able to currently come up with is the number of volunteers and the times per week. And we sort of have an internal standard, an unwritten rule. If your bag's not half full, you don't get credit, and we'll ask you to go back out and try again.
Right. I just know from picking up trash with kids whom I won't name, when they want to get the most bags possible for the school drawing, they'll put in whatever's convenient and not necessarily do the thorough job you'd hope for. So I just wondered whether, you know, you make the rounds, but is there any way that you can have somebody volunteer? I don't know whether you have trustee-level volunteers, the way they do in the incarceration system, or you have somebody that's got your confidence and can, you know, go check the results. I guess I'm looking for more of a performance-based system, because-
Sure.
We're still hearing complaints.
And at this moment, I don't have an answer for that, I'm sorry.
Yeah-
Mr. Bruce?
Yeah, real quickly, along the line of performance-based, do you, what is your opinion that the neighbor, your immediate neighbor is obviously pretty passionate about what's not being done? Are you, do you interact with your neighbor much as a program director? Do you hear the complaints? Are there complaints? Is this what they're talking about, what we've heard here in testimony, a surprise to you?
I would have to say, we strive to communicate with all the neighbors openly and honestly. And when there's a complaint that we have within our control to impact, we provide resources to address it and mitigate whatever that particular concern is. But there are some things we are just powerless to impact.
Like what?
A route a person may take to get to their destination. Our preferred method is public transportation, but we do realize that some folks may walk, so we do have conversations about safety and numbers, the reflector strips, using the sidewalks, not crossing against traffic. But at the end of the day, I'm powerless to make sure that that person is going to wait for the light to cross the street. But it's not because of the lack of diligence on our part to communicate responsibility during our all-shelter meetings or one-on-one meetings with folks.
So what is your opinion of the bag on the floor there?
I would, well, it's a shame for one. And I think-
Is it credible to you?
Is it credible?
Right.
Yeah, I honestly believe Mr. Aliva picked those up around the neighborhood, but I can also say we could match it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? I have one more question, Mr. Harris. You mentioned that you send your volunteers back out if they don't have at least half a bag. Does he have to go out and fill the bag half full? I mean, is there some sort of a reward for bringing back a full bag? Or does he get fed an extra steak? Or, you know, what's the deal with the job? I'm kind of curious, you know? It appears like you've got people that are sort of working for their room and board.
That is correct.
And so if a person doesn't do what they're supposed to do, do we throw them out in the cold, or do we scold them, or do we make them do two bags the next day? Or what's the procedure?
Okay, so to sort of break this down, an individual is required to volunteer for a chore as a criteria for staying the night. If a person's physically disabled, mentally disabled, or one of our seniors, we've exempted them. For an able-bodied individual, yes, we are going to evaluate, did they complete the task satisfactorily? And if they've not completed the task to our satisfaction, we're going to ask them, would you please go redo it? Whether it be cleaning the bathroom, picking up trash, mopping the floor. We're going to, we go through and we check off to see that they were done to our satisfaction. If the individual refuses, then yes, they've not met admissions criteria.
One other question. You mentioned that you don't start work until around four o'clock, because that's when people start migrating in that direction? Is this correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so the sun goes down in the wintertime at 3:30 or 4 o'clock, so how do you go pick trash in the winter, or do you?
Well, fortunately, there's actually a fair number of streetlights in our area, and we go out there and we do it in the morning months. Because we're a nighttime program, we don't open until 5:00 P.M. We start taking volunteers at 4:00. So those are our normal business hours, our hours of operation.
And do you have any hours during the summer when you stop? I mean, if you have light till 11:00 at night, are people out policing up the streets at that hour? Or do they start as usual at 4:00 in the afternoon?
Again, we open at 5:00, so we start those chores and those processes. Our bulk of our volunteers and our evening staff come on duty at 4:00.
Okay, so basically, people earn their bed space between 4:00 and 5:00 if you open at 5:00, is that correct?
Between, actually, some chores do go into the evening hours.
Okay. Okay. So, but as far as picking up trash, specifically what we seem to be concerned about here, does that generally last only a couple of hours?
Yes, we try to have that completed by 5:00. One is because of the heavy traffic, so we want to be, ask our volunteers to venture out and then be back by 5:00. So we have a one-hour time window when we'd like to have them back.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Phelps?
I guess that the assumption here is that the people that come to the facility generate the trash. The trash. Is that your perception? Why do we have so much trash in this area? Do you think it's caused by the people that come to your facility? Do you think it's caused by other people?
And I would challenge, I don't believe it to be any greater than some other areas of town. I do believe with increased foot traffic, the inevitable is, yes, you're going to have additional litter. But when we look at some of the contents of the litter, especially during spring cleanup, a rational person would not come to the conclusion that that was generated by a harmless person.
Mm-hmm.
But again, our volunteers are out there cleaning it up.
Well, it just seems to me that you've got a community space there, and trash is generated by people in general. And I guess I'm not convinced that the trash is actually necessarily generated by the people that go to your facility. They don't have the economic means to develop the trash, so to speak, that other community members might have.
One could come to that conclusion, yes.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Oh, I just want to say thank you for your patience in this discussion of trash. I really don't believe it is the responsibility of the commission to become involved in the operation of a nonprofit facility, and so I'm hopeful that this is the end of the trash conversation.
Any further questions for Mr. Harris? Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to testify?
Hello, good evening, commissioners. My name is Michael Howard. I'm the recently-elected chair of the Fairview Community Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We've heard a lot of testimonies, so I'll try to keep this brief. In regards to the council's position regarding the conditional use permit for Brother Francis Shelter, I'll reference the item you all have, the letter to Angela Chambers dated September 2010. In that letter, we expressed our concern about the shelter's ongoing failure to provide the required status report, as well as the shelter's lack of reception to neighborhood concerns about the negative externalities associated with the behavior of some of their clients. In that letter as well, we indicated that preliminary steps have been taken by both parties toward the establishment of the Memoranda of Agreement between the Fairview Council and Catholic Social Services. The purpose of that agreement, as you're aware, as it says in the agreement, which you also have, is to enhance communications, develop a process for collaborative problem-solving, and to identify and implement goals that benefit both parties. This has been a fairly complicated and long issue, of which I'm developing knowledge and respect for both the Fairview Council and organizations like Catholic Social Services. I think that this M L A would do a lot to reduce some of the tensions that have been building over many years due to the operations of the shelter, and we look forward to a long relationship of Catholic Social Services, excuse me. That said, on behalf of the council, we have to note that all our participation in this M L A is not, does not equate to our support of the continued concentration of organizations serving some individuals whose deleterious social behavior damage our efforts to make Fairview and the- Fairview a neighborhood of choice. We see it as against the goals of our vision for Fairview, a vibrant, thriving neighborhood, and also against the goals of the city's comprehensive plan, Anchorage 2020, regarding the location and dispersal of such services. Along with this, we're also realistic. We recognize, we do recognize the need for these services. It's our position that it's best for the clients of these services and for our community, specifically for Fairview, to have these services more widely distributed among various neighborhoods. We do recognize there are issues with transportation and other resource questions involved, and we're happy to have that discussion. So, our first step where we are today, this MOA, it is a first step, and it's a harm-reduction approach to mitigate impacts we've been dealing with. We hope that in the future, the next step can be that decision-makers in Anchorage, including yourselves, can share our vision for vibrant, thriving community in Fairview. Catholic Social Services has made a good faith effort to collaborate with us, with the Fairview Community Council, and there's no indication that this will change in the future. Those are my formal comments, and then I'd also like to invite you all to the Fairview Block Party we're hosting on June 11th, in front of Fairview Elementary. It should be exciting, and community members will be there, Catholic Social Services will be involved, so. Are there any questions? From 2:00 to 7:00 PM, in front of Fairview Elementary. We'll have music and food and all sorts of fun activities.
Okay, is there any questions from Mr. Howard? Mr. Frederick?
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Hart, could you briefly describe the process that the Fairview Community Council and Catholic Social Services went through to develop this memorandum of agreement? I'm particularly interested to know the opportunities that the community in general had to provide input into its content.
Sure. One of the committees on the Fairview Community Council Board is a harm-reduction committee that we formed at the suggestion of one of our fairly-involved homeowners in the area. And he and our former president Sharon Shimad sat down, and we're aware of the strained relationships between multiple agencies in the community council. And it was sort of the brainchild of some of those nascent discussions just in recent months, that this might be a good approach to, as I said, facilitating some of this communication. So, it's really thus far, it's been, I think it's a Fairview Community Council Board-initiated effort. It still is fairly new. Catholic Social Services has been right there up front, and it's definitely due to a lot of their input that we've been able to get as far as we have. Does that answer your question?
Sort of. Let me follow up. Was there opportunity in a regular, monthly community council meeting for-
Yes, sir.
-for the community in general to comment on this before it was cast in stone?
Yes, sir. It was brought before the council multiple months in a row, as per our procedure for anything approved by the council, and it was approved by the general membership.
Any further questions from Mr. Howard? Ms. Pease?
Yes. Michael. Is there any, since the establishment of this agreement, has there been any talk of the specific concerns that were mentioned in this, that are mentioned, that have been brought back to us? And any structure or any concept of trying to come up with some additional performance standards? Is this something that the Fairview Community Council feels, and I don't know if you can speak to them as their new president, but is this something that the council feels that they can undertake, have a first go at? For example, if the council feels that litter is being generated by the clients of this facility, does the council have the rapport to propose larger patrols and see what kind of system they might be able to work out?
Do we have the rapport with the agencies?
Yeah, the Catholic Social Services. Can you partner with the Catholic Social Services to work on this kind of thing? Or the traffic light, that sort of thing? We're in charge of the conditional use permit, so we have some authority to consider additional conditions. But if there's a mechanism in place, I'm just wondering whether your organization, the community council, has already started down this path? And if so, you know, can it be handled at your level rather than our level?
Sure. I think the short answer is yes, we're at the beginning of the path. Really, all we have in front of us are the responsibilities in the MOA, basically agreeing that we will communicate. So, as far as rapport goes, I think the answer is yes. I think we have a lot of very active, involved community members. I think we have enough relationships with the various agencies, including Catholic Social Services, that I think we have the capacity to really sit down and develop solutions to the ongoing issues and have the discussion in a fresh way from this point on, now that we have the MOA in place.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
And I just wanted to follow up on the traffic safety specifically. Has the community council taken steps to address those with the municipality or the state or whoever's responsible?
Not that I'm aware of recently. We have a whole multitude of things we're working on, so this is, it's, I mean, it's fresh on our agenda for our work plan for this year. So, we'll continue to have that conversation.
Well, it came up here with this group, so I'm sure it'll get a little more visibility now, we hope, with the proper authorities. So, I just want to thank you for all of you, what you do in the leadership of the community council. It's very important to the solution here, and we are going to depend on you. I'm sure we're going to, I'm going to suggest that we ask for a one-year report back and see, or in some period of time, so that we see how this relationship works and see how effective it is. And maybe we can measure progress from now to then. So, with that in mind, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prus?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Can you tell me what the mechanism is if, for some reason, there's a disagreement on your MOA between your community council and Catholic Social Services? In your mind, what happens?
I don't think there's a, to be clear, I don't think there's a strong one there right now. It's a good faith agreement, and it's going to take effort on both of our parts to resolve any disputes that arise.
So, is there a, someone that comes in and arbitrates it? Or recommendations?
We could propose that route if, oh. Let me read this more closely. Where was that, Susan? That's where I'm looking. Oh, here we go. It's right in front of me. For the municipality of Anchorage and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, any concerns or complaints that are not addressed? So, I'm sorry about that. We could forward them to the municipality.
Forward them to this body?
And the Planning and Zoning Commission, yes, this body.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm going to call a recess for just a minute here till we get Mr. Phelps back in the room. So, just stand down. We're now back in the session. Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to testify?
Hello, my name is Lottie Michael, and I grew up in the Fairview area. I currently own several commercial properties in the Fairview area that I bought before the shelter moved in and several since the shelter moved in. And I'm here just to speak in favor of this shelter. I don't see that the shelter has negatively impacted the property values. I've been involved with commercial real estate for 38 years here in Anchorage, and I also serve on the board for the shelter. Been there only 15 years. And I wanted to reiterate the point, I think it was Mr. Phelps made, not every issue with homeless is done by our guests at the shelter. There are other parties at play, so.
Anything else, Ms. Michaels?
I'm sorry?
Anything else?
No.
Okay, let's see, we've got any questions for you? Anybody? You have any questions for Ms. Michaels? Thank you for your testimony. Anybody else wish to testify?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, I was going to sit quietly off to the side tonight, but after being totally sensitized and immersed in the Carlik Manor project, and spending some time in the neighborhood, and walking the neighborhood with Mr. Aliva, who did not like me at all and my representation with Carlik Manor, I'd say several things. First, reality is right in the middle. On the analogy of the airport and moving in after the airport's there, I'm smiling at Mr. Wilson because he'll get this one, that it's okay when you move in after the airport, or you move in after the airport, but if the airport expands and the impacts from the airport are greater than they were before, then there's some associated fallout. And as was discussed, Catholic Social Services and the Brother Francis Shelter are housing maybe 50% more people than what they were originally set up to do. Is that their fault? No. They're doing a great job. Beans Cafe is another group that's doing a great job. The Heritage Land Bank, who is accommodating in a camp directly to the west of Mr. Aliva's property, is probably not doing so okay. Ed O'Neill and the Char Group that goes and cleans up and produces from the camps, the yellow bags that sit there for weeks to be picked up by a parking wreck, they're doing an interesting job. They offer new tents to people that help volunteer during the cleanups of the camp areas, which may, to some extent, exacerbate or attenuate the problem. All I wanted to say, it's a very, very complicated issue. You're not going to get to an answer tonight. Mr. Wilson, I think, is going in the right direction. Everybody has come up here tonight and said they'll try and do better, they'll do their best. I think it's appropriate to have them come back in a year from just a neighborhood and associated deal. I think there's probably more traffic directly associated with people using the services of Beans Cafe in some point, and the camps on the Heritage Land Bank property. And there ought to be some direction from the Planning Commission to the Assembly and to the Administration that, you know, we have a problem here. And I know that there's been a lot of talk about it. Things have partly been done, organizations here tonight that actually have boots on the ground that are doing something about it. But there are impacts associated with the operations and the illegal camps that are associated very nearby. And I think if the community and the Administration really looked at what is going on, there'd be a better idea. So, I don't want to pass judgment on anybody. I did want to comment on the analogy of the airport, because I think it's inappropriate to turn on Mr. Aliva, when in fact, yes, he did make a decision. Brother Francis was one thing when he moved in, it's a different thing now. And everybody ought to talk, try and get along, get together, and as a broader community, try and solve the problem. But there are issues.
Please, Ms. Michaels, sir.
One last thing, I would specifically appreciate it if the Planning and Zoning Commission could ask the transit director, Lance Wilber, the traffic engineer, Stephanie Morillo, and DOT, to look at the road out in front of Brother Francis and Beans, specifically the bus stops, specifically visibility and lighting. And it is a designated heavy truck route, as Mr. Prus indicated. And coming around the corner, or coming down Commercial Drive and heading up the hill with a bus that isn't parked or stopped where it is supposed to be, with not appropriate lighting, with heavy trucks that are trying to grind up a big hill, is not a good thing. And it should be looked at. I believe there are safety issues. I don't believe it's something that Catholic Social Services can solve by themselves. They can certainly be party to the discussion to ask everybody to take a better look at it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Frederick, you have a question?
Thank you. Mr. Potter, in your tours of the neighborhood with or without Mr. Aliva, I'm sure you had a chance to observe some of the impacts on the neighborhood of the population of mostly walkers, either transiting through the neighborhood or coming to or leaving the neighborhood from or to the-
The primary mode of transportation is walking?
Yeah, is walking. So, what did you observe in terms of the impacts off the Beans, Brother Francis site? And any observations you had in terms of their efforts to kind of alleviate those impacts?
My observation, at least, in the times that I've been there watching, is that I would still say that there's probably a more significant population between Beans Cafe and up the hill and to the camps on the Heritage Land Bank land than its Brother Francis users. But there are distinct routes that are pretty heavily traveled. You go out there right now, and there's no question where people are walking. They are beat-down trails, in some places wide enough to drive a truck on.
Ms. Prus?
Yes, again, taking advantage of your familiarity with the area, you said you recommend we give direction to the Assembly and staff, and mentioned the bus stop and the truck route. Is there anything else that the Administration wouldn't necessarily already have tackled under their blue-ribbon homeless task force? Are there any other, you know, acute problems that we who have not walked the area might want to know about?
I think probably the hidden thing that was not caught by the staff is the traffic safety issue out in front of the facility. And why the bus stops where it does rather than at the designated bus stop downhill further, I don't know. No explanation.
And what about sanitation issues? Is that something that you feel the city has looked at?
There are bottles and cans that end up in Mr. Aliva's property over the fence. There are bottles and cans, ices, the preferred beer, apparently, based on my observations. But I really think that's related more to the traffic between the facilities and the camps, and not specifically activities that are occurring at Brother Francis Shelter, especially, or at Beans. But I believe there is activity that transmits between, I would, my observation is primarily Beans from a food standpoint, and the camps. And I believe that to be where most of the bottles and cans are coming. The times I went out, clearly observable, all over the place.
Thank you.
It would be a big job to go out there every day, and you could certainly fill up a bag or two, no question.
Thank you.
Any further questions from Mr. Potter? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I want to emphasize, I don't think it's Beans' fault. There is a moral and social obligation, as stated earlier, that legally, maybe your responsibility stops at the property line. But there's something bigger going on and a bigger responsibility that we all have. But one of the parties that doesn't appear to be here- But one of the parties that doesn't appear to be here is the city, and I think they're a significant contributor to the problem and the densification of the problem at this location. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to testify? Does anybody else wish to testify? Because I'm going to close this thing down here right after we get the final reply. Okay, if the Catholic Social Services and Cook Inlet would come up, you've got, I think, three minutes and 26 seconds for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to follow up on a point that Commissioner Pies mentioned, and that is that there is now a mechanism available for Catholic Social Services, Brother Francis Shelter, to work through these types of issues that we've been discussing here tonight, directly with the residents of Fairview, and that's through that memorandum of agreement. And what a better place for these issues to be resolved, not here in somewhat of a vacuum, but between the residents, who are very familiar with those issues, who understand the impacts, and let them try and work things out. And if they can't, there's a mechanism in the MOA that allows for Fairview Community Council to come before PNZ, and that provision probably doesn't have to be there, they could come anyways. But I think what it does is it articulates the process that's been thought out, that was created through the process that the president of the Fairview Community Council mentioned over many months. There was input allowed by the residents, this process is now in place. And I think ultimately, we all realize that PNZ has the authority to make a decision on the conditional use permit. But let's try the intermediate step first, let's try the first step, which is to let the community resolve it amongst themselves. So I'd encourage the Commission to adopt MOA planning's recommendation to accept condition number eight as being accepted and resolved. And let's let the community resolve this. And if they can't, like Mr. Potter said, and like some of the Commissioners said, maybe we'll come back in a year. And I think there's no problem with that. But let's let the residents try and work this out first, as the intermediate step. They understand the issues, I think, fairly comprehensively. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just take the last 36 seconds, I think. I think the other thing the MOA does, and I think Michael said it well, is it gives us a mechanism to jointly bring issues forward together. You've heard, there's been a lot of talk, and I appreciate the attention to this important issue, about the bus stop, you know, about the trash, about the traffic. There's also sleep off across the street, there's the jail. These are larger community issues, they're larger than Fairview, they're larger than CSS, and I think together, we can be better at bringing these issues forward to the community than we are by ourselves. And this whole process has put us in a position to do that with people that are willing to move these issues forward together. Thank you for your attention.
All right, we may still have some questions, so don't go away. Mr. Phelps?
I'm looking at the staff memorandum right now, and I'm actually looking at that condition number eight. And what it says to me is that you have to provide a staff report within two years, and we've discussed the two-year aspect already, from the date of this conditional use approval on the following items: off-site impacts on the community, transit and crosswalk pedestrian concerns, and I guess you could categorize or describe it as being trash aspects. The question I have is, why didn't you directly deal with those issues?
I thought I had, in the way that we examined them, the information we put forward, which is in your packet, our original response is in there, about the number of trash pickups that we have, looking into the data of the safety at that crosswalk, and the information that we had gathered being at Fairview Community Councils about what they felt the impacts were. We responded to those, and that's what we submitted to the MOA that came to the PNZ last September.
Okay, where do you see that in the packet?
It is pages 37, 39, and onward.
Okay. So, the requirement then is basically to provide information about these issues. And my understanding, based on what you just said, is you provide information on those issues. And what seemingly has happened here is that you've gone beyond the requirements of the stipulation, and actually have developed a instrument for resolving issues in the future. So you've gone, I guess my perspective would be, is that you've gone beyond the conditions of approval or stipulate here, and actually developed a mechanism by which future problems can be resolved. Would you characterize it that way?
Yes, sir, I would. I think that was the intent of both the Fairview Community Council and us working together, because we heard pretty clearly that during the testimony last September, that the Commission didn't feel that we had heard the community. So in response to that, you know, I had to look at what we had done and say, well, I can see why you're saying that, so let's do a better job of meeting with the community and being proactive, like you just said, and trying to find a way to not just meet the letter here, but the intent, which is to solve problems that come up, when they come up.
Would you have any difficulty with a condition of approval that would stipulate you'd have to report back to the Commission in one year as to the results of the discussion with the community and how you've dealt with issues?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick?
Thank you. Through the chair, whichever of you is most comfortable answering this. Is there a structural business relationship between Catholic Social Services and Beans Cafe?
No, we have another, we have an MOA with Beans, because in the winter, when we're above our capacity of 240, we use Beans as an overflow. So we have an MOA with them, and we also share some bills, like for trash pickup and snow removal, and things like that.
But they're a separate...
They're a separate 501(c)(3), yes, sir.
Okay. And so they're not mentioned in, or are they included under the umbrella of this MOA with the Community Council then?
No, they're not.
Okay. Thanks, I cleared that up for you.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Just one quick question of either of you, or perhaps both. I always like to look ahead, if we're kind of looking a year down the road, through the process and evaluating how it goes, how successful it is. Well, how do you view success? What will it look like in a year, let's see?
Well, I would view it that we're all on the same page, and while that page may not be exactly where we want it to, maybe with all the trash picked up everywhere, or, you know, maybe the traffic light hasn't been fixed, or the bus stop, but that we're speaking together about what's going on, and that we agree that we have a process that we've used. Like Michael said, this is, you know, was approved in February, we've been kind of waiting for this session to, you know, move things along a little bit. But, I mean, you asked some great questions about what are some quantitative measures of success in trash pickup. I mean, that's something, we do that at our agency all the time, kind of look at measuring, Marie mentioned it, how we do our work, how well we're doing it. And I would say that, you know, certainly an outcome for us is, are we meeting the needs of the community? And, you know, maybe agreeing to disagree, but working the issue together, that may be one way we would look at it. But certainly, we can get together and develop measures.
Thank you. Mr. Pies?
Yeah, thank you. So eight, nine years ago, this condition, two-year reporting, whatever, is at last, and now we're, and it was done, and I guess now is when we're doing it. Has there been any concern to the issue of the safety on that road? And if so, have you folks done anything? Have you approached the municipality, or the state, or anybody about the road out in front of the facility?
Well, we looked into that, actually, when we were doing this, and then Carlik Manor, RACAP, also looked into it as far as accident statistics there, and they were pretty low. I mean, I know Mr. Alava referred to, I think, three people that were killed, I'm not sure when that is, but no, we haven't done anything with that. We have talked about the bus stop also, and where it pulls over and all, but again, I think that's something we could work on together. But, you know, the statistics, I'm not sure support the dangerousness of that intersection, and I could be proven wrong by that, but I know that came up in the PNZ hearing for Carlik Manor.
So you're not getting any feedback in your position from the folks actually working the facility, that there is indeed a concern? See, that's my concern. If you're not getting the feedback, I mean, it's hard for you to go out and try to do something.
I'm with you 100%. That's why, I mean, you know, the issue, that's what's important about this MOA, there's a mechanism to bring these forward, so, you know, it doesn't end up just being, wow, I just got blindsided by that. I mean, you know, we have a process in place, so things can go from me to our Board of Trustees. So I have not had that brought to my attention, though.
Any further questions for the petitioner? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm closing the public hearings. Matter rests with the board. We have a motion made by Mr. Phelps, and it's been seconded by Ms. Pies. Mr. Phelps, would you please state your motion?
Yes, I recommend that the Commission find that condition eight has been met as a condition of approval. However, I would also stipulate a number of additional stipulations or recommendations. One is that the transit and traffic engineering aspects of the adjoining road area and transit off-going area be evaluated by the municipality of Anchorage, and a report developed as to the safety and other aspects of the roadway and transit, the report to be provided to Planning and Zoning Commission. And the other stipulation would be that the Brother Francis Shelter and the Catholic Social Services provide a report to the Planning and Zoning Commission within one year, describing the extent to which community concerns have been dealt with, and specifically, the effectiveness of the memorandum of agreement that's been entered into between the Fairview Community Council and Catholic Social Services.
And Ms. Pies, you second that? Okay?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Phelps, why don't we go ahead and let you speak to your motion, and then, as we discussed, if we've got any changes, we're going to deal with them as individual amendments. There's going to be no more friendly amendments. Everything we do is going to be based on the existing first proposal. So, Mr. Phelps?
This is a type of use that is going to generate impacts. It's going to be a type of use that involves a lot of people using a facility, and is going to engender impacts related to traffic, trash, pedestrian movement, and the like. Many of these impacts are adverse to nature. Nonetheless, the community has a very strong interest in having facilities of this type, and we've heard testimony that, in fact, this particular organization has done good work over many, many years, both Brother Francis, as well as Beans Cafe, in this case, and that they provide necessary service to the community. And so it makes sense that we continue to support this type of facility at this location. The location was decided a long time ago, and it was decided to be the best location, given the nature of the type of use. There was a recognition at the time, in fact, that it would probably not be the best location, not to be the perfect location, but it would be a location that would be good for that particular area, or work for that particular area. So I think in a use of this type, there are trade-offs, but I think for me, that the overriding issue here is whether or not the use is appropriate inside this area. I think it is. And I think that the issue that is being addressed this evening is whether or not the condition of approval has been met, and I think it has. They have done the evaluation that's been required in the condition eight. They have gone further than that, and they have identified a process whereby issues can be identified and resolved. So I think that the requirements of the condition have been approved, and I think there's a mechanism by which we can resolve problems, that they can resolve problems. And there's a mechanism for the Commission to deal with this in the event that there are problems. We're going to hear a report back in one year, that'll give us the specificity in terms of whether or not this is working or not. We've heard staff say that in a conditional use, we can impose additional conditions. I do not believe we can impose additional conditions this evening. I don't think that's appropriate. But if we find after one year that certain things are not working, and if we find that the traffic engineering analysis and the transit analysis are recommending very specific modifications, we have the ability to deal with that at that point in time. And for those reasons, I'll support my motion.
Okay, Mr. Pies?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. Number two, your motion was a report within one year back to this Commission. Who would the report be from?
The report would be from Catholic Social Services, through the planning department.
Would you be opposed if we also add the Fairview Community Council?
No, it'd be fine.
Okay, we're getting into the friendly amendment thing again, so if you want to add the Fairview Community Council, make a motion, we'll vote on that to add it.
Okay, I'd like to add the Fairview Community Council.
Okay, please press your motion button. Okay, is there a second? Okay, it's been seconded by Mr. Wilson. Okay, Mr. Pies has moved to add the Fairview Community Council as a partner to the one year report. And, Mr. Pies, you want to speak to that?
Well, I just think it's, we should hear from both parties, and if it's a joint report, I'm fine with that. If there's separate reports, I'm fine, but I believe that both parties that are signatory to this MOA should be heard and reported on.
Any further comments? Is there any objection? Okay, Fairview Community Council is now part of it.
Yes, that's the amendment. Now, can we clear it? On the floor, okay, there you go. All right. And, Mr. Pies, is that all that you have?
At this time, yes.
Yeah, okay, fine. Ms. Pies, I saw your name, but you had anything?
No.
No? Okay. Right, is there any other amendments? Okay, are we ready to vote on the main motion? Is there any objection? No objection, that passes unanimously. Okay, our next item, do we need another recess? Okay, let's take about a five-minute break. Okay, hit the button. Calling the meeting back to order. Our final item of business tonight is case number 2011-042. Petitioners of the municipality of Anchorage, and it's an ordinance amending Title 21 of the Anchorage Municipal Codes. If we could hear from staff, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, my name's Sharon Walsh, I'm Deputy Director of Development Services, and I'm also the building official. This ordinance, first of all, I'd like to note that there may have been a snafu in your packets. You have a memo from me regarding the changes in the ordinance, but the packets out front, and the packet that I ended up with tonight, do not have the actual ordinance changes. Do any of you have them in your packet?
No, we do not.
I sincerely apologize for that. There seems to have been a mix-up in the packet preparation. You may not even wish to consider this matter tonight, if you've had a chance to look at the actual ordinances, but if you like, as long as I'm here, I'm happy to talk about the issue, and we can continue the discussion after you've had a chance to look at the ordinances.
Well, I think my question is, is this just an administrative thing, where you're moving chunks from one part of the ordinance to another?
Yeah, I'd be happy to explain that. The 21-08-06-0 is the one part of the, call it the new Title 21, that is actually adopted and in play, and we are proceeding, I mean, we do our business according to it, and that is the... is the part about subdivision standards and subdivision agreements. And throughout, as the memo in your packet does describe, during the latter part of 2010, there were several reorganizations out at the, in our neck of the woods, and what, the major part of it was that the private development section, which is responsible for doing the business of the subdivision agreements, was moved out of project management engineering and put under the umbrella of the Development Services Division, which is part of community development. Project Management Engineering, as you probably know, is, became part of the Department of Public Works. So, the change was really rather significant operationally, because in 2108060, I'll speak to that one first, there's several references to, well, for example, here, application, "Application for subdivision agreement shall be made to the project management engineering department," and it should include all these things, and shall be, you know, the municipal engineer shall receive it. Well, now, the community development department receives those agreements, so the new ordinance would say, "Application shall be made to the community development department," and it used to say municipal engineer, it'll now say building official. So, that's the nature of the changes throughout, it's almost throughout the entire thing, it's simply swapping out building official for municipal engineer, community development department, division for project management and engineering. So, in that respect, it's a housekeeping measure. There's similar changes in 2190. The reason that there's two separate, one's an ordinance and one's a resolution, is because 2190 is part of the code of regulations, so we couldn't do it as one item, it had to be as two things. And 2190 is the multiple, our development of multiple units on a single track, and it's mirrors 2108060 in several respects regarding, we call it the condo ordinance, but it's not necessarily just condos. And same thing, previously, it said that the municipal engineer shall review and approve plans for all developments. Municipal engineer shall determine what standards to which improvements are supposed to be constructed. And so similarly, throughout the ordinance, it swaps out the term building official for municipal engineer. That's the gist of the changes. I, again, apologize, you did not have the ordinance attached to the memo. I think there was a mix-up in planning about putting that whole packet together. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chairman, I think under the circumstances, it sounds like it's purely a book, kind of a bookkeeping, housekeeping sort of change, and I would be comfortable with approving it.
Okay, well, the thing is, it is a public hearing, so we do have to open a public hearing, even if we, if that's what we agree to. Mr. Phelps?
Yeah, I guess my question is a procedural question. It seems like it's a very straightforward change, and I think I understand what's happening here, but it's really a question of planning department staff, is that we're in a situation where we have not actually seen the ordinance yet, and yet we're being asked to vote on the ordinance. Do you think we can do that? This is a question. I don't know the answer to that. Do you think we're, in other words, even though we have not seen it, we have an adequate understanding of what's being proposed, and do you think that's sufficient?
And I'll just, before Francis responds, I'll just also add that, my understanding is that what's being presented for you tonight is for your recommendation of whether or not to move it forward to the assembly, and the assembly actually hears it, and there'll be another public hearing of the ordinance itself, so just kind of clarify that.
So, this is only a recommendation?
Correct.
Okay.
This doesn't change the ordinance tonight, it's just to move it forward to the assembly.
Mr. Prouse?
Thank you. Sharon, is the, they refer to the municipal engineer position, I assume that's one person with a stat, with a title, and then they refer him to the building official. Is that a, one individual with a title called building official?
Correct, and that would be me. It's an appointed position, and it carries specific responsibilities that are detailed in code, mostly in Title 23. And then municipal engineer similarly. Traditionally, municipal engineer and the manager of Department of Project Management Engineering were one and the same person. That was up to the point that Howard Holton held those two roles, and when Howard died, there was, it kind of devolved into two positions, because it requires a professional engineering license to be municipal engineer, and actually, building official does as well. And the, just operationally, within the department, it worked out to have one person managing the department, the other person taking on, call it the engineering decisions, and so that has been designated at this time to Steve Schrader, he acts as the municipal engineer.
Okay, so there is a built...
Right, they're particular people.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, we haven't opened the public hearing, but I'm just going to go ahead and ask, is the assembly going to vote on this, you know, tomorrow? Or, if we decide we're not overly concerned about, if this does seem to be a housekeeping measure, can we just have this come back on our consent agenda or something of that nature? If we just want to go through the formality of seeing the text before we get final approval?
The assembly has, this has not gone into the PACE system yet. We wouldn't go forward for something for them to look at until after, you know, we wanted to bring it to you first, because it is, you know, the parts of code that are within your purview, your, here in the plating board's purview, but Mr. Weaver, Director of Community Development, felt that you folks should be aware of the change before we even went to the assembly and said, this is what, you know, we want to do, or need to do. So, no, it's not on the assembly agenda right now, hasn't gone into the system yet.
And if I could just follow up, would it, in terms of calendaring, when would it appear before the assembly?
If we had a recommendation to forward it tonight, then we would probably put it into the PACE system, you know, the end of this week, and so it could go as soon as next week, than, no, a week after.
No.
Because it has to go through legal, it has to go through, it would have to really be slammed, get slammed through, so it would probably be...
Within the next three months.
Right, well, I should certainly hope, yeah. It would be, it would just start working its way through the PACE system, and probably would be, earliest I've seen a PACE item go in is a couple of weeks.
So, before our June 6 meeting, though, it could conceivably be up before the assembly?
I'm sorry, I'm not an expert in the PACE system, I couldn't really answer you with certainty on that.
If I could just add to, Sharon, I know no more than Sharon does about this subject, but when, after the commission acts, and we have a complete packet, and it goes into the PACE system, and it gets routed by the different agency heads for review and signature, and things are tweaked and fixed in terms of formatting, then the municipal clerk, Barbara Grunstein, decides when to schedule something, and so that whole process takes some time. And then, to respond to Mr. Phelps's question, it's a good question, sort of startled me, but the memo was sent last week, you know, Ms. Walsh's memo was sent to the commission. We have two copies of the ordinance here that we could pass out for you to look around, but it's swapping out words, titles, and if anyone has a copy of their book with them, we can just, we can tell you where to look at it. If you want to see it in writing, we can also email it tomorrow, or...
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Through the chair. So, I am a little bit confused, so help me out here. The private development section has gone to the community development department, development services. So, theoretically, or not theoretically, actually, we're fortunate to have you, Sharon, because you are a PE, but generally speaking, the community development or the planning department, from which this is now all part of, usually doesn't have an engineer. So, I'm concerned about this on a long-term basis. And also, I have to say, you know, on a personal note, I did submit engineering plans, civil engineering drawings, three weeks ago, and I submitted them to PMNE and Don Kiefer. Should I have submitted them to the private development services division?
Actually, I can answer that. Don Kiefer is the manager of private development.
Okay.
Don's group was what was moved, and that was the group that I formerly was in before taking this position. So, I'm sorry, I don't have an org chart on hand, but the community development department is headed by Jerry Weaver.
Right.
Then there's two groups underneath that, there's planning and development services.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm Deputy Director of Development Services. There is an empty position for Deputy Director of Planning, so we're two arms that, underneath the community development department. The position of building official, Deputy Director and building official is one position in terms of a, you know, municipal position description and all of that, and it does require that person to be a professional engineer.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, what I'd like to do now is open up the public hearing, and we'll deal with that, and then we'll decide what we want to do after we complete the public hearing. So, I'm opening up the public hearing in case number 2011-042, an ordinance amending Title 21 for the Anchorage Municipal Code. Is there anybody that wishes to testify? It appears there's nobody that wishes to testify, so I'm closing the public hearing, and the matter rests with the commission. Mr. Frederick made a motion, and it was seconded by Ms. Pease. Mr. Frederick, would you please state your motion?
In the matter of case 2011-042, revision of Title 21, Part 2108060 and AMCR 21.90, I would like to move that we accept the changes to the ordinance as suggested by the planning department.
And has been seconded by Ms. Pease. Mr. Frederick, you want to speak to your motion?
The administrative changes in this regard have already been made and have been in place for some period of time now, and this is a housekeeping matter to let the code catch up with the real world, so I don't feel any trepidation in approving the ordinance as suggested, that it's written, and substituting the building official for the municipal engineer in the appropriate places. We will have a chance to approve the recommendation at a future point here in...
Right, it will come before us as part on the...
Right.
Any further discussion?
Yep.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, I would just note that it's not our desire to generally approve the code unless we see the actual word changes, but one important piece of information provided to us by Ms. Walsh is that the position of building official does require the credential of a licensed engineer as the municipal engineer position does, so it appears as if the expertise required of the position is still required.
Any further comments? Is there any objection? No objection, that passes unanimously. Okay, I don't have anything else, any comments for anything? Ms. Pease?
Yes, I have, I guess, a question. I don't remember that at our last director's meeting, we had any date certain about when we were going to be briefed to have a work session on Title 21, and I recall that Mr. Coffey, the consultant, was going to complete his work, I thought, by the end of April, and now it's May, so I'd like to know when we might be expecting that work session, if staff has any information on that? Does staff have, does staff have any information on when we, the planning and zoning commission, can expect the work session on the Title 21 rewrite or rework, makeover that the consultant, Mr. Coffey, has been working on?
Through the chair. Ms. Pease, may I email you a response tomorrow on that question? I'm not involved in those discussions, but my understanding is that there's been no communication between the consultant and the planning.
Yes, and if you would also, through the chair, we had requested some format in which we could review the changes, attract changes type of format, so that we can understand quickly how things have changed, and so if you could sort of confirm that that's the intent, that we're making progress toward that, that would be great.
I'll write that down and respond to you tomorrow.
Okay, respond to all of us.
Yes.
Yes, of course.
And, Mr. Chairman, likewise, if we could have any information on the repeated delays on the Section 36 master plan, that's something I'm curious about, I'm hoping we're not working toward a, some kind of a delay in the transfer of that park land, so...
Any further comments from members of the commission? Okay, well, I don't want to keep anybody here any later than necessary, so I'll accept a motion to go home. Any objection? We're closed for the night.